Call this meeting the Blue Springs Planning Commission to order. Ask you to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to welcome everyone that's here this evening, those that are watching at home. I'll go over the agenda. We have our consent agenda, which this evening consists only of the minutes of the last meeting. We have three public hearings this evening. One is a comprehensive plan map amendment for McCoy's addition, and another is a rezoning for McCoy's addition. Third public hearing is for the pavilion at Centerline, and then we have a site plan design review for the center at Centerline. So with that, we'll go to the first agenda item, the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the last meeting. Call for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, we'll move into a public hearing, and I'll go over what the procedure is for a public hearing. I will open the public hearing, call on the city attorney for a list of exhibits, I'll call on staff to make a presentation, after which I will call on the applicant to make a presentation. After that, I will open it to the audience for those that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the, to the, to the, what the amendment is. Open the public hearing, call on Mr. McDonald for a list of exhibits.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to do two and three together?
I will do them separately.
For exhibit number, for number two, the comprehensive plan amendment, the eight exhibits are, number one, the staff report with attachments, number two, the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner, number three, the application with attachments, number four, the 185-foot notification map, number five, a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, number six, a copy of the letter sent to those property owners, number seven, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances, number eight is the 2003 comprehensive plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Ms. Tawley?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Before you tonight is CPAM-2-10-2489, which is a request to change the comprehensive plan, map. This is to re-guide Lot 6 from a moderate-density residential to a business park. This lot as shown on the map is located west of the southwest corner of RD Mize and Southwest 7 Highway. I think the staff report pretty much, pretty much covers it, and with that, I'll stand for any questions on the comprehensive plan, and if you don't have any, and it's your pleasure, I'll move on to the rezoning, which pretty much is pretty much the same.
Are there any questions, comments?
In addition-
I'll do a hearing separately, please.
Do you want to do them separately? You'd prefer to do that? Absolutely. Thank you.
With the applicant, please make a presentation.
Please, Roger, you saw this square or firm testimony or given this matter as a truth, or true by the law.
I do.
Please state the name and address.
Robert Walkquist, 4138 Highway TT, Odessa, Missouri. As you've seen, this site is located right next to existing business, it's across the street from the church, I think its comprehensive plan shows that it multi-family for the future. I forget what, which, what we're changing it to, but what, what was it comprehensive? We're on the comprehensive plan.
Moderate density.
I think it's moderate density, and we thought it would be a better fit, step down to just a business park right next to... The client now owns the business park right to the, I think it's to the east of it, correct? But it's pretty straightforward. If you have any questions regarding what we plan to do in the future, or what we're doing this for.
No, I'll bite. What are you going to put there?
Right now, he's gonna, he's hoping to, right now, he has a renter in there, in the existing residential home. He would like to upgrade the facade and actually move his business over to that, because he owns the office building right next door, and to try to get that leasing, he wants to move over there, and at that time, we would come and get a site plan approved through the city, and upgrade that facade, and upgrade that property at that point.
Basically, keeping the footprint the same as it is.
Yeah, for now, and if, you know, the banks loosen up a little bit, then we might move forward with an office building.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor of this, or in opposition to this? Anyone who would like to bring it up here for any comments? Close the public hearing, call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move for approval of the comprehensive plan map amendment CPAM 210-2489, subject to any staff comments.
Second.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Franklin?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hinnig?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Trozen?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to the next item. Open public hearing for, for McCoy's addition Lot 6 for the rezoning. Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits for the rezoning. Number one is the staff report with attachments, number two is the affidavit of publication in the newspaper, number three is the application with attachments, number four is the 185-foot notification map, number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners, number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances, number eight is the 2003 comprehensive plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Ms. Tawley?
Thank you, same piece of property, obviously, and this is the companion request to rezone the property from single-family residential SF7 to service office, to allow for the office use as described by the applicant. With the map on the overhead, I believe you can see, excuse me, that we are looking at general business along Highway 7. This is the property that has the existing office building on it, and it is zoned SO. This is the property zoned, single-family, that he's requesting the zoning change for to SO. With that, I'll stand for any questions, otherwise, the applicant is here.
Any questions for Ms. Tawley?
Thank you. Thank you.
The applicant, please make your presentation.
Please, Roger, you saw this square or firm testimony or given this matter as a truth, or true by the law.
I do.
Please state the name and address.
Robert Walkquist, 4138 Highway TT, Odessa, Missouri. And I will address any more questions this time.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor or in opposition to this? Bring it up here for any comments. Close the public hearing, call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move for approval of the rezoning RZ 210-2488 for McCoy's addition Lot 6, subject to any staff comments.
Second.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Franklin?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hinnig?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Trozen?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
We recommend approval. Okay, we move to Agenda Item 4, public hearing with pavilion at Centerline. Open the public hearing. Mr. Allen, I'll call on Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, for the conditional use permit, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments, number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner, number three is the application with attachments, number four is the 185-foot notification map, number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners, number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances, number eight is the 2003 comprehensive plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald. Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Again, before you this evening is a conditional use permit request. In addition, there is the related site plan design review request, which is not a public hearing, but the comments I'll present here relate to both. It is a combined staff report in that, in that matter, but again, as you saw with the attachments, there are the two separate applications, and they're for two separate requests. The request is by Centerline Beach Volleyball to construct a just over 18,000-square-foot building, which would include both indoor and outdoor recreation areas, as well as future restaurant and bar area. The property in question, as you see there, is east of Amesbury Parkway, on the south side of 40 Highway, immediately west of the existing Centerline Beach Volleyball facility. It's situated on 2.78 acres. Existing zoning is LI/ADPO, which is light industrial, in the Amesbury Parkway overlay. As also noted in the staff report, the Appearance Review Committee did review this proposal, because it is in that Amesbury Parkway overlay district. They did review it back on February 25th. Again, as I just noted, Centerline Beach Volleyball does have existing business located immediately to the east of this proposed project. That facility is primarily open during the warmer times of the year, again, because it is a smaller building, as well as primarily outdoor volleyball areas. You may recall that the property here in question received site plan design review approval back in June of 2007 for what was called Amesbury Storage, and that would be, that was for various buildings totaling just over 32,000 square feet of mini storage and a 500-square-foot office use. Obviously, the property owner has moved on to, with his new proposal, for expanding their existing beach volleyball use with a new building and a few outdoor volleyball areas. Again, as also noted, the project did receive Appearance Review Committee approval just a few short weeks ago. Again, it's proposed as the Pavilion at Centerline project. Staff does recommend approval of the project with 10 conditions, and I'll go through some of the particular areas in question I want to highlight for your consideration tonight. This is kind of a higher-level overview of the proposed project site. You can see to the, to the west, to the left there, is the existing multifamily townhomes. To the east, kind of faded out a bit, is the existing Centerline Beach Volleyball project or property. Again, there more to the center is the proposed layout. I think this shows a little bit more clearly. You can see parking to the north with shared driveway accessing to the east to the existing volleyball facility, and again, with majority of the outdoor area to the, to the south, to the rear of the proposed building. In terms of the proposed building, it is a fairly large and long facade on the north side. That's about 150-foot wide facade. Here's the north side, this is what you would be seeing from, from 40 Highway. This is to the rear, and then obviously both east and west elevations shown as well, both similar in nature. The primary building color is essentially a rock-stone aggregate material and standard stone color, and I believe, I know the applicant did come in with a quite heavy sample of that for you to take a look at tonight, an actual mock-up of what it would look like on the, the areas you see, the, the stone kind of veneer on the, on the lower portion of, of the front facade. There's also proposed to be a standing seam metal roof, more of a bronze color, and again, that stone veneer base, which applicant I think will be showing here, here shortly. Maybe it's a little too dark to see too clearly, but this is kind of an angled 3D rendering from on the ground, essentially from the northwest corner of the parking lot, proposed parking lot, the proposed property line, I guess, the corner there, facing southeast, looking at the front entrance of the building. Parking was an issue with the, the existing facility, as you may recall. They had a lot of tight parking conditions, just with the nature of their business, in terms of teams coming and going at certain times of the, of the year and certain times of the week, and this proposed area is no, is no different in that regard. However, they did provide, as, as required by the code, a Schedule C parking study or parking calculation to identify how they're going to meet their, what's shown here is proposed nine-space shortage for parking. Again, a lot of it mimics what, what's being done on the existing project or properties to the east. They're going to manage court scheduling during peak months, what they identify as June to early August, primarily use the indoor recreation building during non-peak times, again, primarily during the winter months. Cross-access easement would be recorded with the existing Centerline Beach Volleyball to share parking. Future parking plan for additional parking is, was also included in your, in your packet, and that would be future parking on the existing property. And again, condition of approval, the project and Centerline Beach Volleyball must be resolved within 30 days if there are any issues. Again, Lamp and Engineering did provide Schedule C kind of a parking summary and study that they've done to address the shortcomings in the code. And again, some of the, some of the shortage relates to the kind of accessory uses that they're proposing in the building, the restaurant use, the bar use, and not necessarily directly related to the primary use of the volleyball courts. So what's, what's being proposed are 67 parking spaces. The existing facility has 69 parking spaces, so the applicant is proposing between the two to be able to meet the parking needs, but again, staff did identify a condition of approval related to that. As noted, the access to the property would be from the existing Centerline Beach Volleyball driveway access that they have there to 40 Highway. Lighting was also an item that was discussed at the Appearance Review Committee. The lighting schematic, as it stands now, does not extend to the property line, therefore revised plan is a condition of approval, so that's one minor deficiency that will need to be addressed as they move forward. Trash enclosure, you may have noticed there is not one being shown. Not that this drawing would show it anyway, but there is not one being shown, and they're looking to share the existing trash enclosure at the existing facility. And again, that would require an access agreement or access easement be recorded to allow that shared use. Finally, I just wanted to mention the landscaping here. This, too, they're requesting alternative landscape plan approval because of the general shortage in specific plant units, but again, they are showing, as you can see here, a generalized area of existing trees. As you may recall, that was discussed with the previous project approval back in 2007, where they had quite an ample amount of existing vegetation, but again, just conditions did not allow individual measurements of each one of those plant units at this time, but they would need to do that prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued, and they just show an ASBilt, showing that they meet, especially on the west side here, up against existing residential, that they meet or exceed the 305 plant units that would be required in that area. So with that, again, the Appearance Review Committee did recommend approval with conditions noted. The applicant did satisfy some of those conditions already, and that's noted here in your staff report, and therefore, we're left with 10 conditions of approval that staff is presenting here tonight. Now, certainly stand for any questions, but I know the applicant's eager to share their proposal as well.
Are there questions for Mr. Allen? How are the, the existing parking spaces are short on the volleyball courts? Has that worked out all right, though?
I guess I would defer to the applicant for more specifics, but the way it's been described to us is that with their scheduling, as they noted in kind of one of their explanations with their Schedule C parking, just managing that court scheduling, they said seemed to, has seemed to help.
Would this have any impact on the existing parking spaces?
It, it would not remove any, if that's what you're referring to, correct. It would, it's wholly within the vacant lot to the west of that property, but obviously, they're, they're proposing to share parking throughout the year.
And do we have anything on record that shows that, that Mr. Griffl is authorized to speak for all of the partners?
We have a letter acknowledging his being a majority owner in Badger Woods LLC, and therefore generally for this, for the applications here before you tonight, is that's generally acceptable for coming forward with a proposal.
He owns a majority of the...
He is one of the majority owners, as I understand it. Now, again, Mr. Griffl could maybe explain that in a little more detail, but the paperwork that was submitted to staff is generally the type of paperwork that we require, and is generally sufficient for moving forward with this application.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Mr. Allen, on our code requirement on the number of people per court, is the 12, is that something that we provide, or is that something that you've confirmed with him that that's the number of people that normally play on a site?
That is...
Our code?
No, that's the general operations of a volleyball court, as described by the applicant.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
The applicant, please make your presentation.
Please, Roger, you saw this square or firm testimony or given this matter as a truth, or true by the law.
I do.
Please state the name and address.
Kevin Griffl, 911 Southeast Willow Place, Blue Springs, Missouri, 64014. Thanks for your time. I'll try to keep it short and simple, and hopefully answer a couple of questions that were coming up. What we're proposing, obviously, we would, we would manage both properties, both the outdoor volleyball that's currently been in existence. I've been involved in the property for nine years. Bart Walsh, who's technically the owner of that property himself, is one of the partners in this thing with the Badger Woods Group, as we're proposing to put the new building up. We're, we're obviously proposing, you know, both indoor courts, there's four indoor volleyball courts. The use will be a little different on the indoor compared to what our outdoor is. Mainly, our stuff outdoors is primarily adults. I mean, our leagues are generally Monday through Friday. We've even started a Sunday night league, although that's very slow, but, but those leagues are generally adult leagues. We sell a lot more food and drinks and stuff. The indoor stuff, while it would have some, you know, adult volleyball, it would, a lot of it would actually be kids. We intend to run a lot of tournaments on weekends during the wintertime, you know, January, February, March, April, those are primary months where club teams, you know, they call them, that come into facilities. We'd also offer practice time, you know, for youth stuff. It's kind of something that I feel like is a little bit of a niche, with a lot of the cities and parks and recs don't, don't do volleyball, basketball, football, you know, soccer and stuff is usually pretty prevalent. Most private facilities get more into the volleyball section. Like, our closest, what I would call competitor would be BVAC, Blue Valley Athletic Complex, if anybody knows that, that's at Independence. But, but that's the idea for the, for the indoor section. As far as parking goes, I'll, I'll say we, we know that we've had extra cars out there. I mean, at times, during the middle of summer, especially like June, July, that's our peak months, you know, the middle of our summer league, when we really have a lot of, you know, a lot of cars, and it's generally been like on a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday night. This, this building, as far as the summer, we expect very little use, you know, maybe on weekends at best, which has actually never been a problem for us on parking, you know, at Centerline. Our issue's always been, you know, the later in the week leagues that we run. But we're excited for the fact that we've needed parking for a while, we know that. We know there's also consequences if we can't manage it correctly, you know, between the two facilities, but adding another 67 spaces on top of what we already have, you know, we, we feel excited, because for one, the summer, that's going to give us more than enough parking, you know, we hope. I mean, definitely 67 spaces is more than we've ever had out there, you know, for additional cars. So, you know, by being able to manage both of them, same thing in the winter, you know, there's chances that the indoor facility, we start running large tournaments, you know, with kids, even though there's only four courts, you know, kids, parents, people come. A lot of these tournaments, people drive from all over the place. We, we've met with Heart of America Volleyball, and I'll say, just kind of for the record, that as far as Blue Springs concerned, I think it would add extra business for the city. Heart of America runs tournaments, they run over 430 tournaments in Kansas and Missouri. A lot of these people come from all over the place, so it's kind of a benefit that we hope, you know, Saturdays and Sundays, people might be staying overnight. They come in, but again, in the winter months, on those weekends, when, when Centerline's not even open, we'll have, you know, a parking lot of almost 140 spaces, you know, to accommodate, you know, when we feel like we might have extra cars for that facility, so. As far as that goes, I think that's the, kind of the gist. I do have a sample of like what our wall material, most of the wall material, I don't think the color rendering that showed was really a fair representation of, I mean, it just showed up a little bit darker probably than what it would make, than what it would actually look like. I do have a color sample of this, and we've got a color sample of the stone, which also didn't quite turn out, the sample, I think it was a little bit more reddish, you know, when we wanted to be more of a brownish color, but we've got information on that, too, if people would like to see it, so. I'll leave it at that.
I think we can carry that in for...
We've got, Dell's on an exercise plane, so. This is actually an aggregate panel, it's, what we were proposing was, was a, like an insulated panel. This, this is all the front facade on the very, the building that comes out. While the stone is, what you see, like on the columns and, you know, the posts, you know, stuff coming out by where the front doors are, that's the design of the stone. Like I said, I think our color, we intend to be a little bit more of a brown, you know, color goes in there. This piece is everywhere where you see the darker, you know, the real dark color on the rest of the building. If you want, I can pass this around. It's the largest sample I could get, I apologize, couldn't get something bigger, but the company that designs and makes this stuff, I guess, is actually, have redone their, the way they're coming up with these things, so therefore, we couldn't get anything bigger. Breathe hard.
Oh, geez.
Play a little more volleyball, that'd be easier to carry.
Mr. Chairman, is the yellow, I guess you'd say up there is yellow, is that glass or windows?
You mean the, up above where the stone's at? Yeah, that, that's what we consider to be a beige color, we were looking for like an ephesus, you know, the stucco kind of look, like a sand-colored stone, and there's only a couple of windows at the front of the building. I was going to mention, too, I forgot to, I know I was talking about a restaurant bar. We intend this to be much different than what the current, you know, like restaurant bar stuff that we do at Centerline, because we're not, we, we expect this place to be much more family and, and, you know, kid-oriented. Mentioned special events, one thing we'd like to do is, is be open for like birthday parties and things on weekends, when we don't do tournaments, you know, and have a facility where we can have a nice, large indoor area for, you know, kids to play at, but as far as, as far as a restaurant bar goes, I mean, it's really kind of more of a snack bar. We're not putting in a full kitchen, you know, no, like fire suppression type equipment would be needed, just a simple little snack bar and bar area.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I think this can be a very nice facility. I just want to make sure that you've reviewed the remaining 10 recommendations, and we're all on the same page with these?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
I just have one question.
Sure.
What type of flooring, what type of courts are you going to have inside?
I mean, just a, it's a simple flooring. Actually, what I was trying, just the last couple of weeks, to find out, the manufacturers and the contractors that have done some of the schools, both my son and daughter play in a lot of, at least some, I mean, the basketball leagues, Blue Springs puts on, like, I can think of Lucy Franklin, for example, the type of flooring, it's a synthetic, you know, rubberized type floor. Looks like wood. I mean, it's nice-looking, but it's, you know, durable, so.
Just off the top of my head, I can...
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question in regards to the relationship of the other building. Are they pretty well aligned as far as the setback from the property?
They are. They should be real close. This one, actually, I think feet-wise, setback might be just a few more feet because of, you know, codes and things, but yeah, the building, the way it's set up would match, I mean, the roof, pitch line, everything is matching, you know, basically what the current Centerline building was. That was part of our idea of also putting the stone on, is because that mapped, again, it kind of keeps in line with what the area looks like, and colors will all be similar, so.
Sample that you passed around up here, is that going to be like a sprayed-on material? And what will that be going on? Will that be going on, is this a metal building?
Well, it's a pre-engineered metal building, but they actually have that in a panel, like, it's a two-inch, it's an insulated panel, so the panel goes on, it's, you know, finished metal on the inside, you know, color, stuff basically be white, but on the outside, it's that finish that's put on there. I think there's other ways to do it, too. I believe you can go in and do like a metal panel, you know, have something like, something similar to that sprayed on, but what we've looked at and have been proposing so far was to do an insulated panel that basically goes in the building, and that's completed. It's actually very similar. I know the, I don't remember the name, but the warehouse across the street from us has, you know, panels of the same nature, just...
And I do have a concern about the parking, and my concern is that if you do have a large event at this facility, you're already going to be shy of parking, and if I remember correctly, three years ago, we approved Centerline shy of parking with the condition that should the city request it, that you build one. And I just fear for you that you may realize the need is there before you know it. If you have a wedding or a big party here, you're certainly not going to turn away good income for an event like that on the same day you have a tournament or on a Thursday night, and I know that there's been a history of parking out there. I love your business, Kevin.
No, I understand, I understand.
But I have to, I have to bring that forward.
Yeah.
I do have a concern for parking.
And when I said earlier about, you know, I said, we know the consequences. I mean, unfortunately, it's something we have to manage. I know with Centerline, I think at the time, when, well, within a couple of years ago, when we talked about additional parking, our business is very unique. I think we have been very successful, which is good. I mean, it's good to have extra cars, I think it feels like, you know, we've been successful, but at the same time, you know, to go in and put $100,000 or more of a parking lot in a facility that's very seasonal like that, when you really run the numbers as a business, it becomes, it comes to a point where you think, well, heck, you know, maybe we should alter the leagues or maybe not have as many players, which that doesn't probably do any good for anybody. I mean, it's less sales tax, less, I mean, less revenue for everybody, but I can just say on this thing, we've got, it's just, it's something we have to manage. I mean, we can't, our Friday night is honestly our busiest night, so they're just, we'll never be able to have a big function over there. I mean, that's just a stance we're going to have to take, because for one, we're going to make everybody mad if we do get there and there's nowhere for anybody to park, so I think the idea with this place and being able to share properties is hopefully that we're making the, kind of getting the best bang for the buck, if you know what I mean. We're, you know, in the winter, when we need it, we're going to have all the extra parking because Centerline's not even open. In the summer, it's just, it's just one little thing we're going to have to manage. I intend during the summer, if anything, we would be doing, you know, more stuff on a Saturday, possibly a Sunday afternoon, and like I said, those historically have never been issues with Centerline. We very seldom have a large event out there, and if we do, we'll know about it. I mean, we do have a large tournament or something, it's, you know, something time-wise, we've just got to manage, so.
Well, on your parking calculations, I did not see any calculation for people that go just to go and entertain and watch their friends and drink and eat, and I know that there are people that go out there, too. So, I'm just emphasizing my concern that we granted Centerline with less parking than was required by codes, and now you're asking to grant this with less parking. It's just a concern of mine for your business.
Yeah. I agree, and the only thing, there's one thing I can say, too, we do estimate all the players to be six, you know, players a court. There's a couple leagues we run that are only four-person leagues. There's also times where teams don't always bring all the players, so it's hard to, it's hard to guess exactly how many, you know, people are there, you know, at times, if you know what I mean. I mean, if it's teams playing with four or five, but they could have three extra people there, I mean, we're trying to do our best to try to guess, you know, and...
Have you had any complaints in the last year or two?
We've never had, I mean, I've never had a complaint personally or from the business. I just, when the city actually brought it up to us about a year ago, but I mean, that's the first time, you know, so I don't know who the complaint was from. I actually, but we've never had anybody complain like come into our business and say, well, they don't, you know, they've complained because there was parking right outside where the parking lot is, to answer your question.
Mr. Henning, have you been there when there's been...
I have not played for a couple of years.
But have you been there when there's been a shortage of parking spaces?
Yes, sir.
And actually, like I said, one thing, too, like where this proposed property was, where individuals had been parking primarily, was the overflow kind of went into that where that, where the site is now that we're proposing. There's really about nowhere else for anyone to park, so, I mean, most of those cars were going off into that lot. It was just grass. I mean, we tried to keep it up the best we could, but I mean, this is just, it was about the only where, only place for people to go to park at was over in that section, so.
Other questions or comments? Could you explain what your, I see so many names in here, owners of this facility. Could you explain what your partnership arrangements are and what we have that says you are authorized to speak for the indoor ownership?
Yeah, well, I think what we submitted was the, it was our, like our minutes and stuff, that as far as the history, Dell and I, actually, were partners for the Centerline property. We're a partnership, or we're partners in this Badger Woods Group LLC. The other partners are Bart Walsh, Jamie Walsh, a gentleman named Tim Reese. There's five of us. I guess, I'm not sure exactly specifically, like, we submitted, I think, our paperwork, you know, advising that we're members. I can provide some other stuff, but that's all I know of is what we'd submitted in the city.
Are you comfortable with this?
Yes, I've seen paperwork in here that shows they're an LLC that these gentlemen are a part of, and the way an LLC works, they have the right to speak.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of this? Bring it back up here for comments. Close of public hearing, call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the conditional use permit 2102495. Do this conditional use need the conditions as well with staff conditions?
Okay, we have a rule call vote on that, please.
Commissioner Culpepper?
Aye.
Franklin?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Penning?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Trozen?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Move on to Agenda Item 5, Site Plan and Design Review for the Pavilion at Centerline.
Mr. Chairman? I think we heard all of them.
Well, do you have any additional?
Mr. Chairman, staff does not have any additional information for that.
Do you have anything additional? You don't have anything additional that you want to say for that? Call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move for approval of SPDR 2102491 with the staff's 10 conditions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, passes. Okay, item of other business, we need some volunteers for the capital improvement committee. I think most of you have served on this committee in the past. Involves meeting once or twice with staff members and city council members to review the capital improvement projects, and anybody, we need two people from this committee.
Do you know when they're going to meet?
Do we know when they will meet?
Yes, the packets will be sent out last week of March, and the meeting is tentatively scheduled right now for the first week of April.
First week of April during the daytime, right?
And it typically is held during the daytime, yes, although we kind of go with where schedules permit, if that's, if that turns out to be, to be later, then we do it.
Now, I can, if nobody else can.
How many people have served on this committee before? Okay, we have about three that have none. You're one of them, so we can have another one. One of you two. You've been on or haven't been?
I have not.
You also have?
I nominate him.
Oh, look at this.
Would you be well, sorry, Mark?
Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you for volunteering.
You'll like it, though. It's good.
It's like I'm stuck next to you doing it.
Yeah.
Yes, we're going to mark that day.
Are there other items of business this evening?
No.
Okay.
Not from staff.
All right. Call for a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.